I hereby call to order the meeting of the King George County Board of Supervisors. Before I ask for amendments to the agenda, I thought I might take a moment to introduce everyone to our interim county administrator, Mr. Larry Hughes. We're glad Mr. Hughes is able to be here with us in person finally tonight. Welcome aboard, sir. Thank you very much. Very good, thank you, sir. And with that, sir, are there any amendments to the agenda? Very good. Do I have a motion?
Well, I'll make a motion to accept the agenda as presented. Or did I do that wrong? It was one of those moments.
Do we need to make a motion to accept the agenda as presented? If there's no amendments, I don't think we-
No, it's all right. It was one of those moments, you know?
Okay.
Got to add some humor to the meeting.
My bad. I asked for it. Public comments. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person in order to afford everyone an opportunity to speak. If comments relate to a specific public hearing item, we ask that you offer those comments at the time of the public hearing. Is there anyone here in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak? Mr. Dines, do we have anyone online who wishes to offer public comment? Very good, then. We will close public comment and move on to reports of members of the board. Ms. Bender.
One thing I would like, I don't think the camera can swing, but if you could see in the boardroom, there's a nice painted box right there that was done by an Eagle Scout named Sebastian Tomlinson from Troop 255. He did four of those boxes. And what those boxes are is a way for citizens to come and bring their retired American flags for proper disposal. And we can, we will contact the Boy Scouts to come and take the flags and dispose of them properly. So if anybody in the community would like to come and dispose of their American flags in this really nice box that these Boy Scouts did for their Eagle Scout project, please just come. It's in the boardroom. And when it fills up, I will contact Sebastian so he can come and dispose of them properly. And I really appreciate what the Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts do in this community. And thank you again to Sebastian for doing that. My only other thing I would like to mention in my board report, and this has been bothering me for a little while, but I've talked to a lot of people in the last couple of weeks about the service authority and about other county matters that are really important. But one of the, one of the things that really struck me is about the schools. And so I'm going to make a little plea tonight to our school board members and those to please open the schools. I've heard from teachers and parents and students, and a lot of those teachers are great, and they just want to teach the schools, is teach in the schools and teach in person. Because a lot of those kids, some of the kids are, they're having, struggling because they, they miss being in school. School is very important to them. And I, I think we can do it, the school, a lot of those teachers have plans to bring the students back in the classroom. And what I'm concerned about is with our future population, those that are one day going to sit up here with us or are going to find the cure for cancer or many other things that are valuable in life, that we might be losing them. And I say that because once in a while, I do listen in on the meetings that my daughter has, she's in fifth grade. And I've heard some kids have dropped out already and disappeared off the Zoom class. They just don't have anything to look forward to. Seniors, they look forward to prom. Fifth graders look forward to a Valentine's Day party. I mean, I can't believe the last event I had at my child's school was last year's Valentine's Day party. And so why I bring this up is, you know, kids look forward to something. They, they want to get good grades so they can go to the prom or they can go to this event. But right now, all they have is to look forward is a screen. And you've seen articles about depression and suicides and the kids might not ever coming back, those older kids that they've just checked out. And I think it's really important. And we can do it all together and get the kids back into school and have a way for those that are, might want to wait a little bit to come back to school. We have a way to do that. And if we just work together, we can have it done. But constantly, and I don't want to use the term push, pushing the can down the road, but delaying. We have to get back to something and help these kids. Because if we lose them now, they might not come back to school. And that's a shame, because there are future scientists out there and the cure for cancer and all of that. And, and I don't want to lose that amazingness. I mean, when I coached kids, sometimes the teacher or school was all they had. And it's really important. And I don't want to lose that. So that is my plea tonight. And I'm willing to sit down with anybody and discuss it and talk about it and work together. And that is the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bender.
Greetings. And Mr. Hughes, welcome aboard. I really appreciate you having here. Tuesday, the ninth, I attended a virtual meeting, of course, with our cigarette tax committee to further go over how we're going to be implementing this tax and, and other things. We also have a meeting tomorrow. I guess we're going to be hearing something about it later on this evening as well. And Mr. Beal, I see you out there. I guess you're going to talk later on. I just wanted to say, tell all of VDOT and all the Plow Guys, thank you very much. You guys did a great job in our snow event the other day. I was, I was happily surprised to see, you know, all these small pickup trucks hitting the back roads immediately. I mean, six o'clock in the morning, they were rolling down the road. So I just wanted to say thank you. I think the guys did a great job. Maybe they're going to have a little bit more practice this week. I don't know. So, and that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Granger?
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Hughes, welcome. Appreciate you having here. I look forward to working with you for the next couple of months and however long it is for to find our permanent county administrator. But I really appreciate you being here to help us through. Sounds good. Other than that, the only thing I have is on last Monday, February 8th, I had an FRA meeting. And probably the biggest thing that came out of it, obviously, everyone probably understands it's been really difficult economic development with past year we've had. It hasn't been real conducive for those kinds of activities. They did share, though, that they've had an increase in the last 60 days, and it's kind of getting back to where it was pre-COVID. So that's encouraging to hear. And hopefully, we'll move past that even and become more than that. So, but that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Bush?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First off, happy Mardi Gras day to King George. Mr. Hughes, welcome aboard, sir. You're arriving with some interesting times ahead in King George. So budget season is upon us. So with that, I'd like to encourage all citizens to participate in our budget work sessions. It's going to be an interesting year with COVID. Hopefully, we're coming out of it. But revenues, it's going to be an interesting year. And to piggyback on what Ms. Bender was talking about earlier, I'd like to thank my colleague on the school board, who I speak with regularly, Mr. TC Collins, who has been pushing to open the schools. And I wrote down a little something here. So, "Parents want their kids back in school, and the CDC says it can be done safely. Remote learning simply isn't working." So to our school board, we need to open the schools. Families are calling for it. And what, I know valiant attempts have been made at providing education at the virtual level. For some kids, it's working. For some, they're actually excelling. But for many, it's not working. There are more kids dropping out, failing two or more classes than any time before. The metrics are there. They were shared with me. They were shared with the school board. They're readily available if someone wants to get them. I would contact your school board member. But what is in place is not working for our students. And that's something to consider when going into budget season. You look at 49% of the local budget goes to the school system. And taxpayers are looking at this as, what is my return on investment? And a better job needs to be done all across the board. That's all I have, Madam Chair. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bush. And welcome again, Mr. Hughes. We're glad you're here. I won't read a full report. I do want to move to appoint Sierra Huber to the Citizens Budget Advisory Committee, please.
Second.
Any further discussion?
I'll just ask, not that I would try to necessarily nix it, but with the fact that we still have to have separation and everything and an additional five members to our budget discussions, is that feasible in our work environments?
Do you mean as far as social distancing?
Yeah.
Um, I, I think we have the capability. We certainly might not be able to sit up here, but if we spread out in the rectangle like we had been, or if we needed to do so, we could meet at company one.
We did it last year.
Yeah.
We had, we had the same provisions under COVID were in place last year, and we were able to maintain our meetings with the Budget Advisory Committee present.
And I think at least one other member has already previously appointed a citizen. Have you, Mr. Stonehill? Did you appoint a citizen to the Budget Advisor? I thought so.
I apologize.
So if it's, if the board, if the members are inclined, if we do want to, and maybe I put the cart before the horse and have just asked if it was amenable to everyone to do so, as we have in the past, because we did that in the first meeting. Everyone's all right with that?
That's fine. Just bring it up.
And we'll, we'll work it out, and we'll figure out where we need to meet to make sure that that can happen, minding the social distancing guidelines. So I didn't, I did move and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion carries. And that's all I have. Now we'll move on to consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion carries. County officials reports. I do not see any constitutional officers in attendance this evening. Report of the county attorney, Mr. Britton. Do you have anything for us, sir?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I'd ask that you consider and make a motion to authorize endorsing the Edenview subdivision agreement, as well as the deed of consolidation, substitution, and dedication. This is a by right. It's been approved by the Planning Commission. It just came to my attention. That's why I brought it to your, at our agenda meeting, but it didn't make the agenda. But it's a by right. It's been approved by the Planning Commission. Heather is here. If you have any additional questions, but her office has reviewed it. I've reviewed it. It's called for. We've looked at the declarations, the articles and the bylaws, and we have to do it. So I just figured we'd knock it out. And so I would ask that you consider, I have them here. They've already been endorsed by Edenview, that you, if you would, call for a motion to authorize the interim county administrator to execute the subdivision agreement for Edenview and the deed of consolidation, subdivision, dedication, and easement on the forms presented.
So moved.
Second. So any further discussion? Let me just ask members, if any members have any questions of Mr. Britton, or because we have missed the benefit of having Ms. Hall here as well, before we, we do have a motion properly seconded, but let me go down the line. Ms. Bender?
You know, I have some background information, because I've asked about this before. But the one thing I would like to point out so the public understands is that, would you like, this is a by right development, and under the laws, this is by right.
Thank you, Ms. Bender. Mr. Stonehill, do you have anything, sir? Mr. Granger? Mr. Bush?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, Mr. Britton, this is purely an administrative action?
It is. We have, it's ministerial. We have to do it. It's by right.
Thank you very much.
All right. No further discussion, then? All those in favor, oh, sorry. We need a separate motion for each one, right?
You can-
Or can we do-
You can do it in the same motion.
The same?
Yeah, it's an agreement and the easement.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The King George County Board of Supervisors will now hold a public hearing that has been properly advertised to receive public input regarding case number 20-10-Z05 zoning ordinance text amendment to update Article 7 site plan regulations of the King George County zoning ordinance by right development. I will first ask for the staff report. I will then open the floor for public comment. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker. In order to afford everyone an opportunity to speak, please state your name and address before you comment. Upon completion of public comment, I will bring the matter back to the board for consideration. The board may or may not take action tonight, depending on information received during public comment. Go ahead, Ms. Hall.
Thank you. Zoning ordinance text amendment. This is regards to by right commercial development. King George County is one of the very few in the Commonwealth that require by right development to receive an approval from the Planning Commission and/or Board of Supervisors. In an effort to be more business friendly and consistent with neighboring jurisdictions, King George County has considered the following. The requirement is a hindrance upon developers. This adds one to two months of the approval process by waiting for placement on the agenda. Provides false hope to citizens at the county, of the county, that they can prevent a by right development. Developer notification, certified letters, and signage are costly to the project, and staff is required to provide a full staff report and presentation. The proposed amendment does not remove any of the minimum standards of site plan regulations. Any rezoning, special exception, et cetera, will still be required to go before the Planning Commission and/or Board of Supervisors. The proposed amendment removes the Planning Commission as the approval authority for by right development, and the proposed approval authority is the zoning administrator. As stated in Section 5.2 of the King George County zoning ordinance, it shall be the duty of the zoning administrator to administer and enforce the ordinance. While updating this section of the ordinance, staff also made updates to the performance bond language in Section 7.6. As you can see here in 7.6, the red includes or other appropriate security. And Section 2, collectively referred to as the performance bond, it's just for clarity. This section has been updated to make the zoning administrator the approval authority for by right developments. The developer shall be advised by the zoning administrator of the recommendations or decisions in writing. An acceptance of the performance bond will be accepted by the Department of Community Section 7.7, this section removes the Planning Commission as the approval authority and replaces it with the zoning administrator. Again, nothing changes. On January 12th, 2021, the King George County Planning Commission held a public hearing regarding case number 20-10-Z05. After some discussion regarding transparency to the public, the commission voted unanimously to forward case number 20-10-Z05 to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation for approval. To address the concerns of the Planning Commission, staff has agreed to provide more details in the current director's report. The King George County Planning Commission and Department of Community Development staff recommends the Board of Supervisors approve and adopt case number 20-10-Z05 zoning text amendment for by right commercial development.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Do I have any questions for Ms. Hall from members of the board?
I have one quick-
Go ahead, Ms. Bender.
Ms. Hall, we're one of the very few localities. Is there any reason that we're one of the very few localities that still require this?
I think previous boards, because we were a small county, they, that was their way of being informed. So we found other ways to keep the board and the Planning Commission informed without having to go through this process.
Well, I appreciate you bringing this, because a lot of people get confused, as an example, with Edenview. I got a few constituents that thought that they could come and voice their displeasure or, or make changes when it's a by right development. And that, and then it kind of leads people on to think that, you know, that the board has something to say or the Planning Commission can put a stop to it when it's by right.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Stonehill?
Thank you for clarifying this. It's always kind of strange where something's by right and we still have to have meetings. It would be nice to get a briefing from you or your office about it, but, you know, just for a conformative type thing.
What we discussed with the Planning Commission is to expand on the director's report, which I believe is in your packet tonight. So we're providing you more accurate up to date, but we're going to take those by rights subdivisions and expand on the details. So how many lots? It already provides you the location. The Planning Commission wants to know, is it a cluster subdivision? How many lots? How many entrances? So we're going to expand on that narrative. But if there's something different you'd like to see, Mr. Stonehill, please let me know.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Granger?
Ms. Hall, thank you for bringing this again. I know we talked about this as a board a couple of years ago. I think it makes a lot of sense. I'm hoping that we can move forward with this. I don't see any reason for us to be holding public hearings for things that are by right. Thank you.
Mr. Bush?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, thank you for, for working on this, Heather. I am a fan of rolling back regulation, so this makes me very happy. But I like that you just pointed out how you'll be expanding upon the director's report, because even though I don't want to see by right developments regulated and extra burdensome costs placed on these developments, we do need to be informed because of the impacts that come from that. You'll have additional students going to schools, additional requirements, put on fire rescue, the sheriff's office, et cetera, et cetera. So, thank you for, for explaining that we're still going to be getting that detailed information for planning purposes and for mitigating anything that comes out of that. But yes, I, I'm very happy to see us rolling back regulations rather than simply putting more demands on people. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Any other questions? We'll move forward with public comment, then. Is there anyone here in the audience who wishes to speak for the public hearing on this matter? Seeing none, Mr. Dines, do you have anyone online, sir? And did we receive any written statements or correspondence? Any members? Do you have any written, any emails? Ms. Hall, do you mind me just ask, double checking with you, because I know sometimes your office receives correspondence? Did you receive any public comment regarding the matter? All right, I will close the public hearing on the matter and entertain a motion.
I move to approve case number 20-10-Z05 zoning ordinance text amendment to update Article 7 site plan regulations by right development.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Hall. And we will move on to our second public hearing. The King George County Board of Supervisors will now hold a public hearing that has been properly advertised to receive in, public input regarding the adoption of an agreement to lease property, Bayside Ford. I will first ask for the staff report. I will then open the floor for public comment. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker. In order to afford everyone an opportunity to speak, please state your name and address before you comment. Upon completion of public comment, I will bring the matter back to the board for consideration. The board may or may not take action tonight, depending on information received during public comment. And Mr. Britton?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, the Bayside Ford leases the lot where you see all those cars on 301 next to the bus lot, the new cars. And I guess they get them shipped there and transport them or conduct their business through that. They don't sell in and out of there. They have ingress, egress rights. And they've been leasing that for, before they were Bayside Ford. And so we have a land use agreement where they, we give them a license to do that, a lease. And it came up in October, I believe. And so we extended it to March something, the first. So we had to bring it on this board meeting and expires. So we renewed it. They've said they want to renew it. It's $1,860 a month. It's just a 12-month lease, and it has to be renewed every year. And if there's any holdover for whatever reason, like COVID, or we couldn't get to a meeting or something, then they have the right to extend for a month, a month at $1,953, which is just a standard escalation clause. I drafted the lease, and Dr. Young sent it to them some time ago, and they've agreed to it. And so it's in, it's in good form on both sides. The only other amendment to the one presented, I think Mr. Granger picked up that there was a typo. Apologize. An earlier draft was sent to y'all. And I just noticed today that it needs to be changed to Mr. Hughes as interim. So it's just a short-term land use agreement, lease, and it's in the, we're not using the property for anything else, as I understand it, from Dr. Young. So if you would entertain a motion to approve the license for land use for 13283 James Madison Highway for 12 months at $1,860 per month, giving the interim county administrator the authority to sign on a form approved by the county attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Britton. Any questions for Mr. Britton from members of the board? All right, then I will move on, and I will now open the floor for public comment. Is there anyone here in the audience who wishes to speak at the public hearing? Seeing no one, online, Mr. Dines, do we have anyone waiting to speak? And did any member receive any statements or correspondence regarding the matter? I'll take that as a no. All right, I will close public comment and entertain a motion.
I move to approve the license for land use at 16057 James Madison Parkway to Bayside Ford in the amount of $1,860 per month for the next 12 months, from March 1st through 2020 through February 28th, 2021, and authorize the county administrator to sign the agreement as presented.
Just one question, Madam Chair.
That's hilarious.
Made a typo on the typo. Apologize. That is the address of Bayside Ford?
So the- 13283. I see. I apologize. All right. Then I would like to amend my motions to change the address to 13283 James Madison Highway, King George, and to change the termination date to February 28th, 2022.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Britton. All right, presentations and reports. Financial update presentation by Kyle Lau, Davenport and Associates. Thank you for sticking around this evening, sir.
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chair and members of the Board of Supervisors, I've got a paper handout. I can hand out real fast. And so again, nice to see everybody this evening. And, and we certainly appreciate it. Look forward to working with, with Mr. Hughes. And I know we'll miss, miss Dr. Young and all that he did. So I think we wanted to do this evening, which we do many times about this time of year, so we're about halfway through the fiscal year and really getting set and into the meat of the planning process for your 2022 budget and beyond, is give a report, little bit of a reflection, little bit of information, maybe a couple of reminders, so to speak, knowing the number of different variables you have as you plan for this year's budget and future, in terms of where you stand financially as a county. And I think, as we'll go through this again, hopefully relatively quickly, happy to answer your questions as you have them. I think what you'll see, what we see and will see from outside entities is the county's in very good financial shape. So despite all of the challenges that the last year has, has thrown King George's way, the county has really held up very nicely from a financial standpoint. And you've been able to take advantage of that- And you've been able to take advantage of that good financial standing and go out successfully finance the courthouse what was just a couple of months ago. And so we'll give you some of those insights. And again, happy to answer your questions as, as we go. So is it go to page number one? Oh, I've got the, well, I've got the power there. Okay, there we go. I'll go to page number one. And an overview, but again, your 2022 budget process and think again about your 2022, 2026 CIP. And so sticking with that multi-year mindset in terms of the financial planning side of things. So we'll talk about a couple of different topics. I think y'all know what we do. We'll go relatively quickly through that. But then really spend a little bit of time on the credit ratings. We had very good reviews, discussions with the rating agencies just last fall. So we'll point out some of those comments, which for the public, for, for you in terms of what they care about because certainly in this environment, there are some things they are very much focused upon. But we did have very nice discussions with the rating agencies just last fall. We'll talk about fund balances, knowing this is budget season. That tends to be a topic of discussion. You've got very solid fund balances. You've historically had good fund balances. You have policies with respect to those fund balances. And those have really underpinned a lot of what we've been able to accomplish with respect to the rating agencies. We'll give you a little bit of an update in terms of where the courthouse financing ended up. Talk for a second about the county's debt profile. And again, just for a second about future debt capacity and trying to stick within that, that multi-year mindset with respect to capital planning. Okay, so you know who we are. So won't overdo that per se. But again, serving on the same side of the table as you and have for many, many years. Bottom of the page, we did successfully lock in the financing for the courthouse back in the fall, that roughly $22 million and also refinance some existing debt for savings purposes. That saved about $740,000 and also, as you'll recall, served to free up some collateral sooner than otherwise would be. So it's kind of a multi, multi-phase approach that ended up working out very nicely in the marketplace. I think we'll go pretty quickly through that. So spend a little bit more time in here, again, knowing that it is budget season. We've got a lot of different pressures and thoughts with which to be thinking. So where is it that our credit ratings are? The county has, and this is highlighted in green, we have three outstanding credit ratings, Moody's, S&amp;P and Fitch. And you see there Moody's at AA2, Fitch at AA+, excuse me, S&amp;P at AA+ and Fitch at AA. So we are all very strong AA rated. Those are excellent credit ratings, especially for a county of our size. We'll talk a little bit about what it is the rating agencies look at when they're coming up with those credit ratings. And certainly for a county of our size, even as much as we're growing, those are very, very nice credit ratings. The blue little circles there highlight where you really started with the credit ratings, going back, you know, probably 15, 20 years. And so since that time period, really have been kind of an upward march. And so on page eight, again, what is it that the rating agencies are looking at when they're coming up with those credit ratings? And so we have three agencies. We'll just highlight here because they all tend to, while they're independent, there's some similar themes that you can take out of each one of their, their methodologies and their criteria. And so this in particular, we'll look at the Moody's criteria. And if you can see on that, that box there, we've outlined all the various percentages and how they weight different categories. The top box is economy and tax base. So 30% of our underlying credit rating is really tied to how is our local economy doing and how is our tax base doing? It's arguably the criteria that we have the least day-to-day control over, but it does carry a lot of weight. And so by virtue of where we are, and I think also by virtue of where the rating agencies see you going with respect to 301 and all the traffic there, close to 95 or within kind of the greater Washington DC metro area, they had a lot of comfort with respect to where you're heading in terms of, of the economy. So again, that's, that's the third, roughly speaking, that you have the least control over. So then you take your eye down and you look at the finances section. That's another 30% by itself. So right there in those first two sections, you've got 60% of the credit rating. And if you look at the little subcategories there under finances, what they're really talking about in this particular case, you see it repeated there. It's fund balance, fund balance, cash balance, cash balance. And so it's why, again, given this time of year in the budget cycle, we like to just refresh and bring this back up because those fund balances the county's had for so many years and the policies that you follow have really underpinned your excellent performance with respect to the credit ratings. And see, you can see what they care about there, which is how big is our fund balance relative to our overall budget? You've got a policy with respect to that. We'll show you that on a couple of pages. They also care about how that fund balance is trending. See if the little laser thing works here, may not, but the second line item down is our fund balance increasing or decreasing, which with respect to your 2020 audit, it's on, on the upswing. And so again, fund balance is very important. The third little circle down there is the management side. That is one that's arguably most within your day-to-day control. It's probably the hardest to quantify, you know, the fund balance, the finances, that's all sort of tracked via accounting. The management side is the hardest to quantify. And so all right, how is it that they go about doing that? And what they look at is A, how you've performed historically. So do you have structurally balanced budgets? Do you have budgets whereby recurring revenues are covering recurring expenditures, which you historically have? They also look at things like, do we have financial policies and are we following those financial policies? Are we doing multi-year financial plans? So one of the things that the rating agencies, when we go through this whole process like we did last fall, they want to see and kind of kick the tires on what is being done to think not just about next year's budget, but how are you really thinking about at least five years out in terms of planning? And they wanted to see that more and more over the last five years. And, and so again, that's probably the hardest to quantify in terms of the various criteria. But the county's got a good track record between following policies, between doing that multi-year planning that we recommend you continue on top of obviously keeping your, your fund balances where they are. So that leaves the bottom circle there at 20%, which is, is a combination of debt and pensions. So pensions for us in King George, all handled by the state of VRS. We have very little control over that. So that really leaves the debt side at only about 10% of the equation. And sometimes it's a surprise to people. They think, all right, the rating agencies, all they really care about, or maybe overwhelmingly what they care about is how much debt we have outstanding, and they certainly do. But it plays a smaller portion in their criteria than maybe many would think. And so we watch that closely. We've got the financial policies on the debt side that are watched. Certainly when we do the, the budget planning or the courthouse financing. But the amount of debt actually plays less of a role in these overall weightings than I think many people will realize. On page nine, we've got a similar layout for S&amp;P. In interest of your time, I'm not going to go down line by line here, but it's very similar themes. 30% is the economy, 20% is management. They add up budgetary flexibility, budgetary performance and liquidity. That's some of those same themes. That's another roughly 30%. Debt for S&amp;P is also only 10. And then institutional framework, which is a little, a little vague term. It gets to how, how much control do you have as a local government to run your finances, which we get very high marks in Virginia. So again, amongst those two, we'll call them the two premier with all due respect to Fitch, who's also excellent. Similar themes there. They care a lot about our fund balance. They care a lot about our policies and planning. But I think when we think back to those conversations last fall, some of the things going on in King George with respect to the 301 corridor, with respect to cigarette taxes, they heard and they saw those things. And so what we would expect, they'll want to see going forward, which they can come back around anytime and then get an update, it'll probably be about a year and kind of a yearly cycle, is they'll want to see and understand what the plans are with respect to, especially for instance, like a cigarette tax. How are those dollars planned to be managed? And are, is there, you know, a multi-year plan as opposed to kind of a, a one-shot, single-year kind of structure in place? So between the cigarette taxing, the 301 corridor, some of the other new economic development projects, they saw those, they heard them. They'll put that in their notes. And, you know, the next time around that we have an opportunity to talk to them and give them a briefing with respect to that. But those are the things they like to see and kind of get updates on in terms of how are those plans? How are those strategies being managed year over year? So we'll give you just a couple snippets here in terms of specifically what they said. These are all public reports. We'll just kind of give you a couple of little summary points here. But again, this is from last October. So they say this is Moody's. King George's credit position is very strong, more to AA2. They say sizable tax base, positive wealth and income profile, robust financial position in mid-range debt and pension liabilities. So all generally positive phrasing there. Those are not words they just kind of pick out of the air. They're very specific with respect to how they use those terms. Importantly, and I think this, this probably matters for you as a board, as you think about planning. So factors that could lead to an upgrade. And they, they in some respects are kind of related. The first one they mentioned there is tax base growth. So as you think about economic development, again, the 301 corridor, things of that variety, the larger the tax base is from their perspective, the more wherewithal you have, the more financial flexibility you have. So that's, that's the big one that they've noted there in terms of tax base growth. It also ties into the debt and the pension side, which again, pensions, we have almost no control over by virtue of the state. But on the debt side, the larger that tax base is, the smaller our relative debt burden is per, you know, kind of per, per value of the tax base. So we always like to point those out as you think about, again, planning for the future. How do you keep those ratings moving upwards? Standard and Poor's, again, similar commentary. Strong economy, very strong management, adequate budget performance, very strong budgetary flexibility, very strong liquidity, et cetera. So similar themes here. And down in the outlook section there, they talk about should the county's economy diversify and broaden, et cetera, et cetera. That could, again, move us up a notch in terms of, of the rating. And for S&amp;P, we're actually only a notch below AAA. So it's probably going to be a big leap, but it is possible in terms of, of the upgrade on that side tied into the economy. Fitch tends to be the wordiest. I won't read it word for word here. But again, they talk about a solid revenue framework, considerable financial flexibility. Again, getting back to our fund balances and ability to, to kind of weather the storm that we're in right now. The one other piece I'll note on Fitch there at the bottom is they're all aware how tied in we are as an economy to the federal government. So they're aware of some of those tiny kind of trends. They'll ask a fair amount of questions related to, okay, Dalgran, et cetera. How are those things flowing through our local economy, expansions, any moves, you know, sort of away from that, from that site? They always like to get updates there. Page 13, in terms of the tax base, just a snippet here. Again, when we think of generally positive message, and certainly the rating agencies had that commentary. The tax base has been growing. They've seen that. And certainly the hope is that continues to happen as you're doing economic development. And, and hopefully, obviously, as the economy kind of makes its way through this, this current challenging time period. Page 14 is our, is our real estate tax rate. I'll select to point, point this out again, knowing that it is budget season. You've got a very competitive tax rate. That's up to, to you to determine obviously what it is, but it is highly competitive. You know, the Lancaster's and Northumberland's further out in the northern neck, very different. With all due respect, work with all of them than King George. And I think this also goes to a reminder as to how critical those landfill revenues have been to King George for so long. That certainly has helped to a very large extent because we've been able to pay largely all of our debt service for schools, for general capital projects out of those landfill revenues. And I think as, as you in a board, as you as a board, apologize, think about this year's budget, and we talked a little bit about this, we talked about the courthouse financing. We're really kind of tapped out with respect to those courthouse revenues going forward. And so I think that's from our perspective, again, as outsiders, easy for us to say. If you think about things like the cigarette taxes, et cetera, finding ways to help support and supplant some of those landfill revenues, knowing they're really spoken for in terms of existing debt service. And also knowing those landfill revenues, at some point, we know there's the extension on the contract, but at some point it will be full. Hopefully that's a ways down the line. But the earlier you start thinking about that, the better the position the county will be in. You've been good about that in the past. Financial policy guidelines, you've got a variety of them. They've been in place for a long time. The county's done a good job watching and managing those. I won't read this word for word, but I think again, they're critical from the management side of the house. So we'll move then to a section on fund balance and talk a little bit more about the various portions of our fund balance. We've got the unassigned, which is sort of the, probably the biggest pot, so to speak, within the general fund. It's the pot that from, again, an outsider's perspective, should really hopefully be sacrosanct in terms of your 15%. You've been well above that for a number of years. We've also got the revenue stabilization fund that provides a little more flexibility than the unassigned. And then the capital fund, obviously with landfill dollars, serving as a buffer against the fact that all of our debt service is paid from the landfill, at least historically. And so on page 19, we'll just show you an update here. And kudos to you as a board, to your management, to, to Dr. Young and Willmas. They were here. Being able to increase your fund balance between 19 and 20 with everything that happened through that fourth quarter. Very impressive. And again, very strong management on that side of things. The rating agency saw that. So what does that mean in terms of our policy on page 20? We've got our 15% policy that really should be the absolute minimum floor. And we've got some nice cushion relative to that. Upwards of about 26% plus or minus, again, all per the audit as of June 30th last year. Doesn't take into account any activity during the year this year. So with respect to fund balance, you're in a good position. You're in compliance with your policies. It's been well managed historically. But again, we can't stress enough how important it is to be watching those and thinking about those in the concept of, of longer-term planning, knowing that, that we certainly have a lot of strengths, but certainly challenges in the future as well. So I think I've probably said a lot of this in terms of the importance of those reserves. One other piece I'll mention specifically, and you may recall this from a couple of years ago, in terms of your debt mitigation policy and strategy. And so the ability to have some of those year-end surpluses, you have a good year, you put some of those dollars away in the debt mitigation fund. And thus, when those sort of get to a certain level, we'll go out and we can do, again, another debt paydown to kind of start to, to limit and shave some of those peaks in terms of the existing debt service. So it's one of those areas whereby it's frankly unique to King George. It's put a good policy thus far. If you think about the first round of that debt paydown, what it really did was to help clear the way for some of the courthouse financing we did last year. And so in the good years, you put some of those dollars away. They're available to help shave some of those debt service peaks. And then when the next project comes up, whatever it may be, you've just created yourself a little bit of capacity to take that on with less pressure on the budget and less pressure on the tax base. So we'll round out here with just a little bit. We mentioned the courthouse financing. Obviously, we mentioned this being a generational project. And so it really was a two-part financing, meaning the dollars to the actual courthouse and the refinancing of the 2014 bonds. All worked out very nicely in October. And we'll give you here a couple specifics. So the new money portion of this, meaning the dollars specifically for the courthouse, it was a 25-year loan, you see that term, bond issue, really 25-year loan, fixed rate, locked in at 231. So you've borrowed for 25 years at a 2.31% fixed interest rate with the ability to refinance in the future, not that we necessarily see that happening in the short run, obviously rates are, are incredible. But again, it goes to the importance of those credit ratings in the midst of a pandemic, being able to go out, the bonds were sold competitively, it was a lot of demand for those bonds, and it was done at, at very nice levels. So that 231 fixed rate is, is indeed pretty incredible for a 25-year loan. We mentioned the refinancing piece of that, so on top of the new money, also saved about $740,000 by virtue of refinancing some of the VRA bonds, and as you'll recall as a board, we also kind of worked the collateral structure there. Because the county had good credit ratings, I guess an important piece, we're able to use a pretty limited amount of collateral for the size of the financing we did, and thus, some of the property down the road here a little bit will be freed up about 10 years earlier than otherwise would have, again, because the marketplace was comfortable and the rating agencies were comfortable with the overall wherewithal of the county to say, all right, we don't need necessarily 100% of collateral relative to the size of our loan, really we had a much smaller piece, meaning on a relative basis. So that leads to, again, the current outstanding debt profile for general government and schools, largely, as you recall, paid for from the landfill, as we talked about last fall, we would expect that with this latest borrowing, there likely will be a need for some additional revenues outside of the landfill, that's our expectation, we had that conversation. And so whether that is real estate, whether it's other revenues, that'll be obviously part of what you'll determine during this budget process, and certainly will be available with Mr. Hughes to, to aid in that, to the extent that we can be helpful in that, in that process. In terms of your, your debt policies, again, we've got a couple of critical ones, debt service to expenditures, and this is one we like to show two different ways, and it, it, it's a, a way of, sort of a reminder for all of us, knowing we just had our service authority meeting prior to this meeting, and how important it's been to the county that the service authority has been self-supporting, it's not always been the case. And so what we're showing here is this debt service to expenditures ratio, which is basically how many pennies out of every dollar in the budget go to make a debt service payment, but we've shown it two different ways. On the left-hand side, we've got all of our, call it general county schools debt service, we've also put on top of it, that's in kind of that, I don't know, mint-colored bar at the top, the existing service authority debt profile. And so if the service authority were not self-supporting, which is the point of that left-hand graph, we really would basically be at the limit of our debt policies, we'd have no other capacity for the general county as a whole, whether it be schools or fire stations or other things, to be able to take on additional projects. So on the right-hand side is our current situation, because the service authority has been self-supporting, meaning because they've been able to cash flow themselves as a business, we don't have the constraint of their debt sitting on top of our county debt, which provides some more breathing room and more capacities, we'll talk about capacity relative to our policies, to take on additional capital projects, to the extent those come up, not saying they're immediate, but certainly it gives us more flexibility to think about planning for the future on the general county side because the service authority is indeed self-supporting. Page 27 is a similar theme, just a different ratio, this is our other, one of our other debt policies, debt versus assessed value, how much outstanding debt do we have relative to the size of the tax base, and this is what we were talking about earlier with respect to the rating agencies, the bigger that tax base gets, the better this particular ratio gets. And so what you see is that ratio is going down each and every year because each and every year the county's making principal payments on its existing debt, and so it's natural to expect that ratio is going to get better in the future, but to the extent we make principal payments every year and the tax base grows, that ratio looks even more advantageous to us. And again, the left-hand, right-hand, left-hand side, if we didn't have a self-supporting service authority, we're much closer to our policy level, but because we do have a self-supporting service authority, we've got some more breathing room with respect to our policy level. And so that, Madam Chair, we've probably got a couple of other details here in the back for you, but we, as always, appreciate the opportunity to come up and, and see y'all, that's all we have, certainly we'll be around and available, and we've had some good discussions on the service authority side of things, and so happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Bender?
Nick, I have one question. So I know one of the many arguments for, is to make the service authority a public utility, so if that was true, then that would do exactly what you said in this graph, it would make us closer to the red line, correct? Like if you absorbed all of that debt.
Well, so when you say public utility, let me just make sure I understand.
Well, I mean, the, the term is to bring it under the county's umbrella as opposed to being, like you said, a self-supporting business.
Okay, so, so the answer there really is more in how it's cash flowed, so if, whether it's a public, whether it's a component underneath the quote-unquote county or it's a service authority, the critical piece of that ratio is that it's paying for itself. And so there are local governments out there that have a public utility that's a department, as long as that department is paying for itself, we can demonstrate that the general fund is not kicking in dollars, then that's what really gets us to, we'll call it the right-hand graph, whereby we've got good capacity relative to that, to that policy. So with respect to that particular policy, it probably doesn't matter quite as much in terms of, is it a service authority or the Department of the County, and there's a whole bunch of other reasons that you want to think about one versus the other, but as long as it's cash flowing itself, meaning the revenues of that utility are paying for the expenditures of that utility without having to get support from the general fund, that's, that's probably the most critical piece of, of kind of getting from the, from the left-hand side to the right-hand side.
I appreciate you clarifying that because that, that, there's big misconception out there, so I wanted to ask you that exactly to, so that it would clarify it to a lot of people, and I appreciate it, thank you, and the graphs really do help.
That's all I had, Madam Chair. Thank you, Ms. Bender. Mr. Stonehill?
I have a question, I just wanted to say thank you, like usual, over the years, you guys have done a great job, and certainly, there seems to be some fairly good news after the year that we've been through, but just thank you again.
Yes, sir, we, we appreciate it, and certainly it is, I think as many places as we work, it is, it is very good news, I don't mean to make light of, of any other challenges out there, but from a financial standpoint, you're in very good shape.
Mr. Granger?
I don't have any questions, I'd just like to say thank you for coming out, I always appreciate your briefs, and thank you for being here.
Mr. Bush?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I have a different way of looking at it, I don't, I don't see us as in a great financial situation as, as what was presented. Yes, we are on solid financial footing for right now, but I do not, I, I don't like the outlook, and I'd like to highlight some things that you brought out in your presentation. So first off, I'm gonna start off with some good news. So the financing and the refinancing for the courthouse was absolutely genius, it was done, executed flawlessly, so kudos to you and to Dr. Young for facilitating that. What was able to be achieved on that is, to me, unheard of, so kudos to that. So now, I'll start with, so I'll, I'll go back to, I'll start with what Ms. Bender was talking about earlier. So the county is basically the underwriter for the service authority, so yes, we're, we're taking that debt service and we're shifting it off to, to the service authority, it's still a county department, but for financial purposes to break it out, to be able, enable us to still have borrowing power to build firehouses or whatever, it's under that, its own entity, but we have, the county has contributed through other means, through capital improvement funds or anything that can be tied to economic development. So the expansion out on 3, 301, you know, the county helped with that, but their debt is pretty tight, that five-year plan that they have in place is pretty tight, especially on the customer base, so the only way out of that is to expand the customer base, but I think that, being that the county is the underwriter for the service authority, if the service authority were to fail financially, if it was no longer financially solvent, that debt does fall to the county, so it doesn't go away. If we were a public utility, however you want to label it, it still falls to the county, the only way out of that is public sale, and it becomes a private entity, and that would also have its own issues. So the service authority is of concern, I understand it's been 20 years in the making, I think the board is making headway in, in getting the situation improved, but that, that is a serious concern that I share. Also, if you go to page 14, you presented what our, our tax comparative rate is, and I'm looking at some of these localities, and for what our tax rate is, though, some of those counties have a lot more to show for what their tax dollars are paying for than King George County does. One thing that is of concern to me is with the rate we're at right now, you were talking about the landfill, and those revenues aren't used to, for capital improvements, landfill revenues are basically paying our debt service, so all those funds are obligated, it's not revenues coming in, it's already spoken for, but what does that offset? So the landfill rev, revenues that come in to service our debt service or our debt fees, what is that artificial offset that if you took away that and we still had to cover the debt, what would our tax rate be? So we would still have what we have now, nothing extra, no new firehouse, no nothing, what would our tax rate be? And I believe when we looked at this two years ago, it was somewhere around over 90 cents, so that would put us even, even higher. So that artificial offset is really something to be concerned with. We talked about economic development, and kudos to our economic development department for trying to bring things that, that they are, but times are hard. We have stores closing, over there by Walmart, we've had so many tenants that came in and there's empty storefronts there already, and you were talking about the base. Well, the base is transient, though. Some people live in King George or Oakland base, a lot of them don't. Well, now with virtual work environment, our restaurants aren't being eaten in, you know, people aren't stopping to get gas, we need to diversify that economic footprint. So if you take all that into account, and the revenue shortfalls that we're probably going to be getting, and then if you pay attention to what's going on that, in the General Assembly, all these unfunded mandates that are coming, just yesterday, I sat in a Social Services Board of Directors meeting, and there's more mandates that are coming from, from the state just for that, and no money associated with it, so they're going to be coming to the locality to pay for that. Same thing's going to be happening with the schools, on and on and on. So I, I think our financial outlook, while our funds may have significant balances as of right now, and just last year, we put a pause on our very own policy for the debt mitigation that you highlighted earlier, we need to plan accordingly and fast. You were talking about five years, I think we need to plan for the next year and how we're going to address it, because I, I appreciate the numbers in here, but I do not think that our financial outlook is as good as, as being painted. That's all I have, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Bush. I want to thank you for coming out this evening and your presentation and taking the time at, at this board to provide us an update as we head into our financial planning, our budget planning season, and the service authority presentation that you provided us with, and I particularly want to point out that I noticed, as you spoke, that when you talked about the bond ratings, the credit ratings, you called this our county, our county, our county. That shows me that you take ownership in what you do for our county, so thank you very much for your time this evening, sir.
Yes, ma'am, we, we certainly appreciate it. Mr. Bush, I mean, I think if I can, I'll, I'll give you 10 seconds, then I'll stop talking and leave you all alone. All of your points, I think, are valid, and I think it gets back to that, and you said at the end, the planning piece of it. And so if the rating agencies are looking at us, in essence, in a point in time, all right, so they're gonna look at what the last audit is, and then our plans for the future, and they were comfortable with it, but to your point on the service authority, that is certainly a, it's, it's still its transitionary phase, right? So we've been on this path where it's been self-supporting here for a number of years, but we talked with Mr. Weekly about this earlier, that, that path to making it sustainable, and that's probably the next step, going from it's self-supporting to it's sustainable. And so that piece, because we know it's still very growth-dependent, right, there's still a bunch of revenues that are counted on from availability fees, and it's that sustainability piece, I think, is the last big hump to get over. So take all your points, and, and I think they're all, they're all valid in that sense, and, and on the service authority side, certainly I think that's something that with, with Mr. Weekly, we've been talking about. So with that, I'll leave you all alone. Thank you.
Thank you again. Moving on to our next report, V dot Resident Engineer Report by Mr. David Beal, Mr. Beal.
Thank you. Good evening, it's good to be here. Mr. Hughes, it's good to meet you, I look forward to working with you over the coming months. Mr. Stonehill, I appreciate your, appreciate your comments. I did, I would say, the easy part of our job is, of my job, is getting the snow off the road, the challenging part is doing that as efficiently as possible. One of the reasons you see so many small pickups is that we didn't have the number of dump trucks that signed up this year, so we had to supplement that with the, with the small pickups, and they are critical to our success. So we've, we've gotten that done with them this year, but I'm hoping to be able to do that more efficiently in the coming years with some larger equipment, with all the primary route lane miles in the county, the dump trucks just hold so much more material that they're more efficient spreading that up and down the road. But we're getting the main thing done, so that's the main thing. Mr. Granger, you had contacted me about County Drive, and I left you a voicemail, but hadn't had a chance to talk to you about it, I've got an email string this long that I have flagged to follow up on, different staff members are looking at that, and I'm gonna get that information to you as far as what would be required for acceptance on that road as soon as I have that time. Between the snowstorms we've been fighting since the end of January, we have been able to get some additional maintenance work done, we repaired a shoulder on 301 and then on Indian Town Road, we've been machining some gravel roads, we continually patching potholes, especially with the storms, they're popping up everywhere. Continuing to focus on ditching, we've ditched on Salem Church Road, Nan Zatico Lane, and Chestnut Hill Loop, we're also continuing to clean the curb and gutter on Route 3 with the trustees as, as we're able to, and then we're doing pipe cleaning, and we have another storm this week that we're getting ready for now. And one thing with the snow removal, maybe the public doesn't see as much, and I've, since I made the transition from land development into the maintenance, it's opened my eyes, but there's so much prep work that goes into, before you start brining, to brining, to pushing the snow off the road, to cleaning equipment, and even just restoring your materials, because we can't get, we can't get salt out of Baltimore or, or Hampton Roads overnight, so we have to shuffle a lot of salt around between storms to make sure it's allocated evenly from our, from our large salt dome at Haynesville. So while you see us push for a day or two, it's a couple days before, and probably three or four days after, before we can focus back on a lot of the other maintenance work. We do have, continuing to, to clean curb and gutter on Route 3, we have a pipe replacement that we need to finish up on Shiloh Road. We have a pipe replacement that we need to finish up on Shiloh Road, working on some ditch stabilization on Millbank, and then some additional pipe cleaning. And we're trying to get back to Potomac to do some additional drainage work there, as well as the litter you had contacted me about. I did add the pavement schedule to the report this month. The plant mix, Thmaco, that's a thin, hot mix asphalt concrete overlay. So that's a government acronym for you, Thmaco. That contract's pending award, and the plant mix, which is the Millen fill inch and a half asphalt, that one's pending award too, but I'm confident we're going to be able to award those. We're planning to do the Thmaco on 301 down towards the Caroline County line, and then the plant mixes on Bloomsbury, Conmore and Indian Town Road. And then the surface treatment routes are there as well, and that contract has been awarded. They should get underway. The contractor wins the award for the entire residency, and he can start in April, and he has to finish by October, and he sets his own schedule. I think he probably, he's out of Richmond County, so he'll probably start down there and work his way back up throughout the summer. I also added a project on here for curb warning signs and striping upgrades on Salem Church Road. We'll get underway to that in a couple of months. Secondary six-year plan is coming up, so we'll get to work together on that. I'm hoping we'll have our dollar amounts for allocations in the next 30 days or so. So be thinking about your priorities for hard-surfacing gravel roads throughout the county. Smart Scale, I don't have any good news to report. I'm sure you're all probably aware, the staff recommended funding scenario did not include any of the applications from King George. We had seven applications throughout the Northern Eck residency, and only one of them was recommended for funding. That funding is not approved until the CTV votes in June, but none of those applications were included. And we'll just have to look hard at the future applications and try to be strategic on, you know, putting forth an application that really has a good chance of scoring well, which may not be your top priority. So we just have to, I think, be a little more strategic on that. The other items have been on the report for a while, but with that, I will open it up to any questions you all may have.
Thank you, Mr. Beal. Ms. Bender.
I just want to thank you for all your time. You gave a very thorough report, and I appreciate it. I have seen it, the roads, seen the brine on it way ahead of time. I saw some tonight. I think you applied some on my way here, and I appreciate how you've kept up Eden Drive. I know we talked about that, and you have kept that grass so that people are not obstructed when they come across and get on 301, and I just appreciate all you've done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Stonehill.
Just thanks again, no further. I'll keep bugging you about the trash there on Commerce.
We're doing our best. I know Keith is trying to schedule with the trustees now, but they don't come out in the weather, so we'll get it.
Thank you.
Mr. Granger.
Mr. Beal, thank you for coming out. I got your voicemail as well, so I appreciate that, for getting back to me, and appreciate you looking into that, that one road. So, but thank you for all you've done, and it has been, I appreciate all that you guys do for making sure that it's safe travel to our community. Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Bush.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Beal, thank you for coming out tonight. So three years ago, when I came onto this board, we had issues with VDOT when it came to winter weather. I believe I referred to King George County as a geographical oddity back then. It's like VDOT stopped at the Stafford County-King George line, but it's been amazing. And what we just encountered, to see the roads and the conditions they were in, was just amazing. So thank you very much. Great job. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. I would like to take credit for that, but the team was in place before I got here, and they were making changes before I got here, and I've heard nothing but good feedback. So I'll pass that on to them, but appreciate your comments.
Thank you, Mr. Beal, for everything you do. We appreciate it.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks for coming out this evening. Have a good night. All right, moving on to action items. Economic development, Sheets to Sheets Marketing Materials. Mr. Miner.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. I am here requesting $505.50 from the Tourism Fund for marketing materials for the Sheets to Sheets Trail Run. This is a 14-mile point-to-point run and roll King George County, benefiting local children in need. The Sheets to Sheets Run attracts people not only locally but regionally as well. This year's registration reached 250 participants. Last year, there were 150 participants. It is our goal to support this activity in promoting the county with T-shirts and stickers. The cost of the merchandise, well, I should say, the breakdown of the merchandise is 250 stickers that will go into each giveaway bag for each runner, and then 50 T-shirts as giveaways at the run, the date of the run, which is March 13. Tax recommendation, our tax recommends that the board approve funding for the King George County Economic Development Tourism Application. Staff agrees with tax recommendations. Here to answer any questions that the board may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miner. Ms. Bender.
I don't really have. I know it's very popular with the running community.
Mr. Stonehill.
Hopefully it'll dry out a little bit for the guys before they get going. They'll be running in knee-deep water down the north end of the trail, but yeah, looking forward to see. I'm going to try to get to this one this year.
Absolutely. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Granger. Okay, Mr. Bush. All right. So I just want to know, because these are those blue and gold stickers, right, with the boater and the runner and the bicyclist, right? I just want to know where I can go buy my own set of all of this swag.
So you could, so what we're going to do, so this is sort of me predicting into the future, but what I'd like to do is to set aside, just like I'm asking my later request, an annual budget for marketing materials, and maybe set up some sort of purchase order so we can, you know where to go to get it, or we could just have the logo ready for any of the sign creators or marketing companies within the county. But I believe for this one, I believe this will be at Sign Works. This is where this will get this logo from, so you could probably go there and purchase it. Any other residents could probably go there and purchase it as well.
All right. With that, I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve the tax recommendation, I'm sorry, move to approve the funding for the Sheets to Sheets Run Tourism, their tax application as presented.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Miner. And the next item you have is economic development, digital advertising, visit King George website.
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. The Economic Development and Tourism Department requests $6,000 annually for the Visit King George website marketing. These ads will put our banner messages in front of all tourist prospects in our desired geographic regions who have expressed interest in tourism in King George, for example, via their online searches. After review, the tax recommends that the BOS approve funding for the King George County Economic Development Tourism Marketing Website Funding. Staff agrees with tax recommendations. Let's just sort of elaborate on this. If you search, or if you currently Google "Visit King George," nothing will pop up. And that's because you have to actually purchase, or you have to fund that search result. So if you search King George currently, right now, you'll probably get the county website, and you go two or three pages down the way, you might then run into the Visit King George website. So you have to, you have to basically buy your way to the top. So after this, hopefully when you search King George County, you'll see the county website, which organically gets pushed to the top, because it's a government website, and then below that you'll see visitkinggeorge.com. Another example would be if you search tourism or things to do in King George, the Visit King George website will pop up. We're currently not funding that, which is why a lot of the residents and/or visitors can't find the website. So this is essentially just set a baseline, $6,000 annually, annually, or $500 a month, and then we essentially scale it up as needed, or scale it up as events come along. So I'm happy to take any questions. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Miner. Ms. Bender.
I understand why this is important. My concern is I'm only seeing one company. And I remember, this gave me some heartburn back when we first mentioned using this at the beginning of the pandemic for local companies to be able to promote them, but I would like to vet this a little bit more. I don't know if I'm wedded just to one company. I still push that we should have somebody in-house that's operating our website and press releases and all this, so I'm not, I know the importance of it, but I'm not just, I think we need a little bit more here than just grabbing the first company that comes to the table.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Stonehill, do you have any questions?
So of course, you know, you said to do that, so we're all up here doing that as well. But if you punch in, I guess, visitkinggeorge.com's search or the heading bar or whatever it may be, it immediately pops back up. So this money is going to be like, the only thing I'm familiar with is like Google, when they do their ads, you would be, you would be paying them to move up in the ranking of searches, SRO, what is it?
SEOs.
SEOs. So that would be, you know, that's what this money would be for?
Yep. So it's not just, yes, sir. So it's not just the Visit King George search, but it's also other keywords. So if we were to set up a trail page on there, we could target people who are looking for running trail series, or targeted however you'd like to do it. If there's a targeted industry sector we'd like to go after, you could target it using these searches. It's just adjusting those words as you see fit.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Granger.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Bush.
No questions. Thank you.
I don't have any questions at this time either.
Thank you, ma'am.
Is there a motion?
I move to approve the funding for the King George County Economic Development and Tourism Marketing Website Funding as presented.
Second.
Further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
So in the board report for the other request, there is a tax recommendation. Are you funding this out of the, this, the way the motion is, you'd be funding it out of the county general fund?
No, this should, is this?
Right, so the motion would be to relate, to approve the expenditure from the tax fund, but there isn't a, there isn't a designation like there was for the $505, which is why I didn't bring it up last time. Maybe it's just not in my board packet. That's why I thought maybe this was a general fund expenditure.
So, Mr. Miner, is there a, I don't see, I know the first present, or the first action had a corresponding application for tourism funding, but I don't see where this one had that.
Yes, ma'am. So I didn't provide an application because it's not geared toward an event, or it's not geared to, so we're not targeting a specific audience. This is just basic or baseline level marketing. I'm happy to go back and supply one. I apologize for not supplying one tonight if it's required. And I do, and I also recognize that it's not, I don't think it's in there where we're requesting in the subject line or in the summary directly towards the tax, directly towards the tax fund. So that's a short sight on my part, and I apologize for that.
Madam Chair. Go ahead, Ms. Bender.
I haven't, what I brought up the contract before is there's a company named here, and we're talking about using this yearly, but there's no contract or anything presented in this packet. That's where, I don't think there's enough information to make a decision.
Go ahead, Mr. Bush.
Thank you. So being this would be tax funds, and we receive those, I believe it's on a quarterly basis, we could approve this, but we should place a timeframe limitation for the life cycle of this. And if it's something that has to be renewed on a six-month or annual basis, we could go ahead and stipulate that. As far as the application, do we really need an application? I understand the Sheets to Sheets Run, but that's an outside event or entity. Being this would be marketing for basically our economic development department, I wouldn't see that we would need an application for those funds because they are, those funds are governed and utilized by the county for that purpose. So the tax, we wouldn't even really, would we need tax approval to utilize those funds if it's going directly towards a tourism-specific website or marketing, et cetera?
Yes. You need to recommend, you can override tax.
Yes, sir.
But you need a recommendation. You need it to show them that the funds were applied for and the tax ruled on them. That's in their bylaws. And I gave, that was all in the report that I gave when we drilled down, and that, so what you see there for the application of funds is the mechanism that they have.
So in the absence of an application, this is something that we would probably have to table.
You could, I mean, obviously, Mr. Miner's not making it up, but they had the meeting. You could say, subject to providing the appropriate motion or resolution from tax showing that they authorize, that they authorize the funding, and subject to a contract in accord with the Administrative Procedures Act and on a form subject to the county attorney. You, yes, you could, it has to go to the tax, and then they have to apply to you for the use of the funds. They can't spend any of it, of those funding. My comment, I was about to say objection, but wasn't such that the actual formal application wasn't there, but that the motion itself also doesn't say to authorize the spending of tax, tax funding. You would have just been authorizing funding it from the general fund the way the motion is now. So I think that unless it's an emergency, you could do it conditioned on providing the application, once provided by a tax, because they've already voted on it apparently, it's just pro forma paperwork, or bring it back at the next. But I don't know if he needs the $6,000 right away.
No, sir. So then, again, not providing the application, I apologize for that. I just, since it was just a direct request for just general marketing, it's not geared to a specific action, I didn't think that the application was needed. So again, I apologize for that short sight.
Madam Chair, I mean legally, obviously, I think the best way, and for the accounting department, I'm sure they, if they were listening, joke, they're not, because they're doing something else with their time at this point, they would be cheering and saying, yeah, this is what we want to get so that we can release these funds. This is how we track it, so we don't have to go back and go through all of the concatenations we did before. And then they should get this in the, it's in the formal warrant is what essentially it is. And then they know exactly where to take it from. My fear is without it, they release money from the general fund, and the tax fund balance doesn't go down.
Right. So I note on the application, it does state very first sentence, purpose. This application is the mechanism to apply for funds. So I think in the interest of erring on the side of caution, Mr. Granger, would you like to?
I move to withdraw my motion and table this issue until the next board meeting.
All right. So, Mr. Miner, then you have the board's direction to go ahead and square that away and bring it back to us. And the only other thing that I would add is that when I typed in "Visit King George," when I Googled it, I did not type in .com, and it did not come up anywhere. I'm, I think on my third page of Google results, and don't see "Visit KingGeorge.com" website prompted to me anywhere. So I do get where you're coming from as far as the need for the search engine optimization. Thank you very much for coming out tonight, sir.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sir. All right, moving on. County Administration, Cigarette Tax Committee. And it's my understanding, Mr. Hughes, that we need to add two more members to our cigarette tax committee, being you, Larry Hughes, and Travis Cusenberry. being you, Larry Hughes, and Travis Cusenberry, is my understanding. And, Mr. Stonehill, you are a member of that committee. Can you just confirm that for us, please?
Yes, that is correct. We need to add them.
All right. So do I have a motion to do so?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Madam Chair, this may have been taken care of in the previous resolution by the board, but as these come up, just in case, there's no prohibition on this committee of having a citizen. Dr. Young was on there. I would suggest that there be a motion to remove Dr. Young since he's no longer county administrator.
So just rescind his appointment? Would that be the proper way to do that?
Yeah. You can rescind his appointment or remove him from the committee.
All right. Is there a motion?
I move to remove Dr. Naaman Young from the Cigarette Tax Committee.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion carries. And designation of a courthouse oversight committee. And this actually is something that I initiated. Mosley Architects contacted me to inform the board that we should consider, A, that we should form an oversight committee, and B, that we should also include, consider including a supervisor member to that committee. And so that is where we came upon the list that is presented in the packet. So do I have a motion?
I move to appoint the referenced individuals to the King George County Courthouse Oversight Committee as presented.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Do we just want to run through so people know who those individuals?
Yes. Do you want to read them?
Sure.
Me too, sir.
I'll read them.
Okay.
Chief Circuit Court Judge Herbert Hewitt, Combined Courts Clerk Rebecca Connor, Circuit Court Clerk Vic Mason, Commonwealth's Attorney Carrie Guzman, Lieutenant Ron Govan, Kathy Bender, and Travis Cusenberry.
Thank you, sir. All right, discussion items, cigarette tax status update. Mr. Hughes?
All right. The cigarette tax committee met about a week ago. We have another meeting coming up this week. We're exploring options for administration of the tax. The Commission of Revenue is developing an idea of administering it ourselves. So we'll come back with a recommendation when we get to a conclusion. There's also the Northern Neck Tax Board, which is an option for us. We haven't gotten much responsiveness from the Northern Virginia Board, and plus they have their hands full taking on all the counties they're taking on. So we're looking at doing it ourself and going with the Northern Neck Tax Board, cigarette tax board.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes. Mr. Stonehill, I believe you and Mr. Britton also serve on that committee. Do either of you have anything you wish to add?
I'll let Mr. Stonehill give in substance, but on the legal front, as you know, the, so the General Assembly said any county can do it. And then this year, they were saying, wait a minute, any county can do it through a regional commission, and that got scaled way back. And either NACO, yeah, it must be NACO because cities already have... So the council with NACO has already been working with them, and they have the bills in good shape. I've given it to Mr. Stonehill, and that's not required, and it's not going to be required once the final law gets passed. So in other words, we thought that counties other than Fairfax and Arlington weren't going to be able to tax cigarettes unless they were in a regional commission. Now they will be able to. So that says we don't have to join Northern Virginia. We don't have to create the Northern Neck. We could do it on our own, whichever we thought last year, but was in danger this year because of some bill. But that's apparently dead on arrival. And there, as to the substantive comments, I'll leave that to Mr. Stonehill.
Thank you, Mr. Britton. Mr. Stonehill?
We're just back to the whole, are we going to do it on our own? Are we going to form the Northern Neck Cigarette Tax Board? Because we would have to create them. I did speak to Jerry Davis the other day, and that whole group down there is waiting to hear from King George because they're not going to do anything unless King George gets in and does it. So we actually have a meeting scheduled tomorrow with all the players, the counties and the town administrators that are going to be included in this. And I know that Mr. Britton has been working on the legalese aspect of it. But we're still kind of just back and forth about, do we want to try this on our own? Or do we want to have Jerry Davis and the Planning Commission, the Planning District Commission down there, handle that? And he did, he's done their ambulance billing service for all the counties down there, kind of like what we have up here. And it seems to have been worked out pretty good, and they're really having a good time with it. And it seems to be good. So he's going to model the cigarette tax board off of that. And it's just a matter of, you know, which way we're going to go. And, you know, I was, I was pretty impressed with, you know, what they had to say. I'll be interested to see what all the other administrators and county officials tomorrow talk about. And there's a number of things that we have to get ironed out. And, you know, trying to get everybody to agree on, you know, four or five different, you know, kind of stumbling blocks that we have is going to be interesting to see. I did reach out to the city of Richmond a number of times. They've been doing it since 2019 on their own, and I got nowhere. And I was told, just stop calling because no one's going to get you any information. So it's just a matter of what we all decide and what's going to be easier.
All righty. Thank you very much, gentlemen, for the update. Moving on to budget work session dates. So, Mr. Hughes, can you tell us with your schedule and your availability, do you have a preference for a certain date of the week? Or how would you like to help us set that up?
Earlier in the week rather than later would be better, Tuesdays, Wednesdays.
Okay, very good. So let me poll, let me poll the members and see where we're at on that. Ms. Bender?
I have no problem with Tuesday or Wednesday.
Mr. Stonehill? Mr. Granger? Yes. Mr. Bush?
After 4:30.
Okay, yeah, yeah. Yep. So, Mr. Hughes, then, could you pull together a proposed schedule for us? Tuesdays or Wednesdays? And obviously, it would have to exclude the first or third Tuesdays because we already meet on those for our regular meetings?
I will do that.
Go ahead, Mr. Granger. Did you have something to add?
Did we want to try to set one up just to get the ball rolling?
Yeah. Why don't we go ahead? That's a great idea. Let's go ahead and set up a first date so that it can be advertised.
Madam Chair, do we want to do the Wednesday after our next board meeting?
So that would be March 3rd, if I'm tracking that correctly? Does that work for everyone?
Yeah.
We could even do it 5:30 or 6:00 to make it a little earlier.
Yep. That's good to me.
Wednesday, March 3rd, 5:30? Yes?
We have it in the boardroom or Company One or to be announced?
TBD. Yeah, we'll need to see if the boardroom is available. All right. So Wednesday, March 3rd, 6 o'clock.
6.
Location TBD.
5:30.
5:30. 5:30.
Like it.
Yep, 5:30. I'm sorry.
How many work sessions do you believe you'll need?
We're going to need quite a few this year.
Go ahead, Mr. Bush.
In the past, it was set up by the county administrator, would, how many ever we need? I think we had four, wasn't it, Richard?
I think we had six.
I feel like it was six. It started out, and we would sort of go meeting to meeting. We didn't really have a firm, it's not like what you saw with the Service Authority earlier this evening where we came up with every Thursday in March. It was more flexible, and we, it sort of flowed. And so we had the first work session, and at that work session, then we would come up with the date for the next work session, allowing for time for advertisement, of course.
I know we always had to push the schools a little bit later because they have to wait to find out state funding and things along those lines to understand.
Yeah, so probably about six or seven dates.
And if I could suggest, Madam Chair?
Go ahead, Mr. Bush.
Last year, we had a work session specific to the compensation packages for public safety. I believe that's something that should be on our radar again this year. So maybe if that's a budget session, we can set up early on with Sheriff Giles and Chief Moody and take another look at our compensation package because I believe that they're going to find themselves in a position where they need to be more competitive.
All right. Thank you very much. If there's nothing further, we'll go ahead and move on. Joint meeting with King George County Service Authority.
Apologize, Madam Chair. I'm not sure, did the motion get made and?
Oh, we need to move to advertise. Yep, sorry.
I move to advertise a budget work session for the Board of Supervisors for the date of March 3rd at 5:30 PM at a location to be decided. By the county administrator.
That's fine, as long as it's in the advertisement.
Yes, the location will be in the advertisement. And Mr. Bush seconded. Any further discussion?
Can we make sure that, so we used to receive calendar invites as well from Dr. Young. So these work sessions, if we can get those calendar invites, I greatly appreciate it.
Yep. Yes, Mr. Stonehill?
And also, we're going to get with the Citizen Budget Advisory folks as well, have them included?
I would imagine they should be included, yes, at this point.
I believe there's two appointments. So if this is going to be following our next meeting, if we have follow-on appointments, we can invite them at that point.
Yes. Yeah, so they, for the most part, would be present at the meeting where the next meeting is decided. So hopefully, they'll have their opportunity to provide their availability at that point as well. Okay. We had a motion. It was properly seconded, and we are finished, everyone, with discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion carries. All right. Joint meeting with King George County Service Authority. So we did discuss this in the Service Authority Board of Directors meeting, and that board agreed it would be best to do it at a regular meeting and also best for our staff. And suggested one of our regular Tuesday meetings and perhaps start early at 5:00, possibly, because it may be lengthy. Does that work for everyone, Ms. Bender?
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Stonehill? Yes, Mr. Granger. Mr. Bush? All right. Would we like to go ahead then and choose a date?
How long?
They were thinking March or April.
Like, would staff be ready for the next meeting, or would they want to wait till the second meeting?
I think we probably should wait till the second meeting in March, if we wanted to do it in March.
I'm amenable either way, so whatever everyone else would like to do, I would go along with.
I mean, if this is a regularly scheduled meeting, I'd leave it to the chair to decide because you know the agendas or what's going to be on the agendas for both bodies. So I would leave it at your discretion to decide.
Right. The only consideration, though, is that if we're starting at a different time, we need to make sure to advertise the 5:00 start and that it is a joint meeting of both boards. So we need to go ahead and pick a date. So let's pick the second meeting in March, which I think is also the 16th.
Yes, ma'am.
Yep, I'm good.
Can I have a motion, please, for advertisement, please?
I move to advertise for a joint meeting between the Board of Supervisors and the Service Authority Board to be advertised on Tuesday, March 16th at, for a 5:00 PM meeting at the River Cone Building in this room.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Thank you. County Administrator Report. Mr. Hughes?
Madam Chairman, I have one thing. The board needs to schedule a work session with the consultants who are doing the search for a county administrator. It's probably one of the, if not the most important thing, one of the most important things you'll do in your term. It'll probably take an hour, hour and a half to develop the profile. It'll be used for advertising and promoting the position. As I said in the report, you need to consider experience you want, education you want, personal qualities you may want in an administrator. And that'll be conducted by Drew.
So I note in your memo, we have suggested dates of February 23rd, which is a Tuesday, or February 25th, which is a Wednesday.
Thursday.
I'm sorry, Thursday. Thank you, Mr. Granger, at 6:30 PM. So let me poll the members and see if they have preference. Ms. Bender?
I like the first date better, but...
Thank you. Mr. Stonehill?
What were those days again?
23rd or 25th of February.
I can do either.
Okay. Mr. Granger?
Either.
Mr. Bush? All right. So because we have a member who has expressed a preference, let's go ahead and choose that one, February 23rd at 6:30 PM. Now, that one, we will, to make sure there is not anyone using the boardroom. So we will need a motion to advertise.
I move to advertise a meeting of the Board of Supervisors for February 23rd at 6:30 PM. A location to be decided by the county administrator.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
That's all I have, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes. All right, moving on. I don't think we have any staff here that might want to present a report. So we have a closed session, I do believe.
I think Ms. Han, I'm not sure, but Ms. Han is on the line. I don't know if she had a report. I just was telling you.
Okay. Ms. Han, if you can hear me, do you have a report you'd like to present? Okay, in the interest, in the interest of time, we'll go ahead and move on. And I believe we have a motion for a closed session. Mr. Stonehill?
I move that the King George County Board of Supervisors convene in a closed meeting pursuant to VA Code Section 2.2-3711A7 for the purpose of consultation with a legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation regarding Sedgwick Crossing, where such consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect negotiating and/or litigation, litigating posture of the public body. And VA Code Section 2.2-3711A8, consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel regarding Sedgwick Crossing. I invite the county administrator, the county attorney, because they are deemed necessary and/or their presence will reasonably aid the board in consideration of its topics to be discussed pursuant to VA Code Section 2.2-3712F.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries. We are in closed session. Mr. Stonehill?
I move that the King George County Board of Supervisors return to public meeting and certify by vote that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered during the closed meeting.
Second.
Ms. Bender?
I certify.
Mr. Stonehill?
I so certify.
Mr. Granger?
So certify.
Mr. Bush?
Certify.
And I so certify. Do we have a another motion?
Just for adjournment.
Yeah. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I motion to adjourn to February 23rd at 6:30 PM here in the boardroom.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries. We are adjourned.